Staffs ready? All right, I'm gonna call to order the city council workshop for April 22nd, 2025. Do we have any member of the public signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Let's start off with item 2A. Mr. Hornis, you're listed. Are you the one who's known?
Yes, sir, I am, I am, and with the help of Rosa Ledesma when questions pop up. But we gave a presentation yesterday to the EIC board about this very same thing, just a kind of a standard update that we have given them. And I, I'm not sure we separate out the EIC quality of life projects from just your general CIP project updates. I think we lump all those in together. So we wanted to bring just these projects to y'all's attention, give you the progress, the good news and the bad news. Fortunately, there's just a little bit of bad news, but we have some solutions. Don't want to bring problems with no solutions. And so, so with that, I'll get into it. As everybody remembers, the quality of life bond projects include the Calhoun Theater, the Olympic Pool, Scott Shriner Golf Course, the AC Shriner House, the Granger McDonald Park, and playground equipment that was installed at Curville Shriner Park and Guadalupe Park this last month. So, all of the projects with the exception of Granger McDonald are in some form of construction at this point, except for, well, the pool's not. So, the pool and Granger McDonald. But Calhoun Theater is well underway because the budget for that project was $4 million. Construction did start in March, and our expected completion date is August 31st. The budget that we have for Guido Construction, which is the contractor that was selected still, and I said this yesterday, the best name in the contracting business, is 2.99. It actually is, we need to amend that too because we have a deduct, there was a deductive alternate that was selected based on the roofing material that we chose, and so we actually have some savings even built in within that budget right now. So this is, we weren't sure. We didn't know when we uncovered the roof what we were gonna see. There still are some potentials out there to uncover stuff. We're moving along in that process though because they have done a lot of that tear down. And so, our hope is that we come back to you and have a substantial amount of savings on this project specifically, that we don't go much higher than where we're at. There has been requests by Playhouse 2000 for some additional work to be done. That was outside of the initial scope. EIC had asked about that, and so there's some things within that request that make sense that are, if you turned the building over and shook it, they wouldn't fall out. But there's a couple of things in their request that they would fall out, and they're not really the responsibility of a capital bond. And so, but the vast majority of what they have asked for, I think, is a reasonable ask. And so, we will be probably bringing an amendment back to that effect. Essentially, it's renovations, portions of the bathroom, the proscenium, which is the archway over that, to paint that, the installation of some new chairs to replace some of the aging ones, some safety lighting on the steps, as well as, like, that's the vast majority of it. But there was art in the vomiterium, which is also my second favorite word in theater. That is the space between the lobby and the theater. And it was, it's, I love these words when I learn-
Say that again.
Vomitorium?
Oh, boy.
I learn something new every day. And a lift, a request for, to replace the ladder with a lift. And so, you know, we felt that that was maybe more of a tenant. Those are tenant issues to address. So we should have that to bring back. But again, still well within budget, well under budget, and on time. So, that project is going well. We may have a street closure when the front portion of the roof is being worked on because it does overhang well into the sidewalk. So the sidewalk will be closed off, and then depending on how everybody feels, there may be just a lane closed off during some portion of that, just so you know. The photos aren't the most exciting because this is a roof project and an HVAC project at this point, so it's tearing out old stuff and installing new stuff. The middle photo does show the, above the men's restroom, kind of post demo. That was a area where you stepped on it, and it was a little, it was a little more shaky than I would like it to be. I wouldn't trust putting Brenda on there. I definitely didn't trust myself on there. But we're gonna have some HVAC units in place there, so that's, you see those concrete pads right there. Some of that HVAC is gonna move up there. We'll have more pictures as kind of the progress goes along for each of the projects. Now we get to our sort of problem child as far as budget. So, we had an initial scope of $7 million for this project. The full A and E cost to include the construction administration with Marmon Mock is about $900,000. We're looking to those folks to reduce some of that. The design is done at this point, so those costs are spent. But there's about $200,000 left in their budget for construction administration and all the specialty trades as a part of that inspection. So, we are kind of value engineering that with the architects because we all need to, basically, the thinking is we all need to share in this a little bit. So, you know, we had put out there, we need a $6 million project, and both of the bids that came back came in over that. And, you know, we're evaluating and discussing with the assumed low bidder on the project at this point, and we're working on areas that we can do value engineering. If you remember, when we had the public safety building discussion, we did a considerable amount of value engineering after we were under contract with Burn. And so, we're doing that now as a part of the discussion with, with the low bidder to see where we can get to. A couple of things are big ticket items that I, I, I'm not sure if it's, you know, there's some tariff pieces in this. I think there's about a 5% jump in tariff scare for folks. The, the pool restoration is actually the, one of the pieces that was higher than expected. And again, I think this is a product of some of the instability that we're seeing in the economy right now. Everybody hedging their bets a little bit. And part of the reason that we felt like we were not off in our estimations outside of that piece that was unknown is the alternates that were listed. So the assumed prices we had for the alternates came back pretty much the same as what we had expected them to be. But just, there's a few pieces in, in their proposals that are just beyond what we could do. So we're now asking them to see where we can have some savings. But part of the discussion that we had with, with EIC yesterday was about savings that we get in projects for the Calhoun Theater and potential savings, and we'll talk about in a minute at the golf course. If we, if you all were amenable to it, and we made the same ask of EIC to utilize some of those savings to kind of help buffer the, the delta here at the pool. So.
What'd they say?
Well, Councilman Harris is part of that group, but, but I can summarize it. They said yes, they would be amenable to it, and they would also be amenable to having kind of an expedited meeting because of, the schedule on this one is long. It's about a 50-week construction schedule. And so, we're, you know, we don't want to push into '26 summer and be closed down. But there's a couple of things that we can do right off the bat to look at, making, making some value engineering considerations. The material type on the walls, that's one example. The hydro blasting of the coping and plaster, which is a more expensive way to remove the plaster. You can just chip it off. So, there's, there's kind of a laundry list of things that we can look to, to make some savings in there, but I don't think that we're gonna, we're gonna meet the delta. And so, we are, we're early on in that process. We received those bids last Thursday. And so, we've been sort of scrambling, reviewing, calling people, talking to them. So we're not, we're not fully, we're not there yet. I also don't know exactly where we're gonna end up on the golf project and the Calhoun Theater project. We feel confident that we're gonna be at least $650,000 to $750,000 saved at the theater project, conservatively. I hope that's more, and I expect that to be more, but just conservatively, I think that's the number I can use. And golf, about $250,000 shy of that $4 million. And so, using those numbers, it's about $1 million, right? $900 to $1 million. And what we had hoped, all of us, Rosa and Parks Board and EIC and y'all, is that we would have savings that we could use for additional projects. That was really the hope, right? What else can we tackle on top of this? But this one just kind of, it hit us a little hard. And so, what we've asked was to take an amendment to EIC, and then back to y'all, if you were amenable to it, to increase the budget for the pool project up to $7,750,000, $7,750,000, in the hope that, you know, we're gonna continue to value engineer, try to get this thing down to seven. I think, I think we'll be somewhere in the middle of that, but that gives us a little bit of a buffer. And I was really excited to show you all of the design concepts that we came up with, and I will, but before we do.
I'm sorry. So Celeste asked a question yesterday about-
Yes.
-the pool, and I'm not a competition swimmer, I mean, as far as that is to believe. She was talking about like kickpads, and shortening the distance of the pool, which would not allow it to host competitions because instead of being 50 meters, that would knock it down to like 48, is that correct?
Well, so, yes. So it's, there's, there's two things to consider, right? So there's, there's your kind of, you know, kids and young adults swim, which is 25-yard pools. And then there's sort of longer swim, more adult swim, that is 50-meter. I don't know why they can't both use one system. But, you know, and Rosa can speak to this more than I can probably, but I think that the majority of the swim meets that you will see will be for the 25-yard swim, which is why we had put a bulkhead to give us the ability to go from a 50-meter pool to a 25-yard pool. Now, the problem with it is you kind of can't have both. When you put the bulkhead in, the one that we requested, which is less expensive than the other one, it, it, it is in the pool. You can move it, but it won't, it'll, it'll have about six foot. So it makes a 50-meter pool 48 and a half.
So you move it, you can't remove it?
No. We could, you know, maybe Stuart and some other strong people, but not normally.
I was curious to know.
It's not meant to, it's not meant to leave. It's meant to be pushed out of the way, but not to leave, right?
I watched the meeting yesterday. I was wondering what percentage of swimmers, I mean, what would we, I know we would attract competition from outside of Curville, is what she was saying. Is that a big thing?
Well, Shriners University was the one that had swimming competitions, I think. Would be amenable to that. I don't know about high schools.
Yeah.
Swim, what, are they not 50 meters in high school?
No, 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 yeah, no, gosh, no, it's, there's 25-yard pools. This is kind of the standard, right?
So it would just be the college?
College, yeah. And kids swim, and USAA, whatever. I used to do it, but I can't remember what it is now. And so, that was, that was the rationale for doing that. Otherwise, we'd have just knocked out the bulkhead and saved $340,000.
That's where I was confused on it, about the length. I failed to realize that it was not removable.
There's another, there's another option that we considered where you put rails in, and then the bulkhead sits above the pool, right, and does that. But that was part of a value engineering exercise that we had to go through early on because of the delta and the cost was, so we've done quite a bit of the value engineering already, and it looks like we're gonna continue to get to do a little bit more of that, so.
Thank you. Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah. I'd love to be able to do both. I just, I think that it's the art of the possible. I think it has to be one or the other. And the recommendation from the Parks Board, from Park staff, and the rec world is to do that with a 25-yard pool option. That would move out to the side when it's not used. Deep end or the shallow end, either way. So with that, here are the renditions for the pool. So this is a tear down and a rebuild of the entire structure. It has a few features in here that are surely gonna come out. So we had decorative doors that are gonna be less decorative, I can guarantee you that. This will, this process will look like architects really don't like me because it'll go from, it is nice and austere to more austere. And, and, you know, what the, what the great benefit to all of this is, is a pool where people are gonna go swimming. That's the whole purpose of it, right? And so, we can, we will make all the modifications we need to, to get where we need to. But I think there's, again, I think there's still gonna be a delta. So that's the front entryway where people would check in. Staff is there, lockers are to your left. And another view here from the opposite direction, that's where the kids' pool is at. It's got that opening in there, so it's not shaded all the time. It would get a little cold in there. And there's a handicap accessible walkway behind that rock wall, so a little ramp that goes down behind there. One of the things that you'll see in the very background on the right is a raised sort of roof on the right. That's gone. That was part of a value engineering. That's just gonna be a flat roof to that piece. And then, some other things. So this is, this is what it would look like, absent on the right-hand side, that's the spectator seating and the covered, the covering for that. So we removed the, in the initial phases of this, the team locker room. We built it all out so that it has the ability to, just, it's stubbed out. But it's about $900,000 for that locker room piece, and we don't have a team. Shriners indicated that they're interested, and Tyvee has talked about it, but nobody's committed enough to say, here's a million dollars to help you pay for it. And so, that spectator seating is for that very purpose. And then the timing as well, that would be, again, all of it is gonna be stubbed out so it can be put in, but the actual features for the competitive swim, except for the bulkhead, is what we're, is all out of the base bid at this point.
So the seating will be adjusted to the end that's gonna be used for the short swims?
No, the seating is, we'll have tables and chairs like we do now. This would have been like stadium seating like you see in, in the, you know, football stadium or somewhere. It's not, it's not gonna be there at all. So it was one section that was for the 25 yards, and it's, it's, it had to be removed from the project at this point.
So we're not having stadium seating?
It's, it's listed as an alternate, but at this point, when staff, when we look at it, we don't see ourselves getting to many of the alternates. So you have, in blue, these are, this is kind of just, it's hard to see, but in blue, you see the, the team locker room and the detention pond that had to go with it. So adding the extra square footage required the, by code, the inclusion of a detention pond. Without it, we don't need the detention pond. It's not the biggest cost in there, it's the actual locker room piece. In purple on the right, you'll see it's a monument sign. And then in purple on the left is that sort of raised, I'm forgetting the word, Rosa. Breezeway, breezeway cover. So it's a nice feature, but it's slated to go. And then the stadium seating in orange on the back. And so, we have, we have several alternates. They were all included in that, but again, the base bid came over, and so.
Oh, currently, families can go, and they have umbrellas out there, if I remember correctly? Because families go all over the pool area. They don't congregate in the, underneath something necessarily. If kids are over here, they're gonna want to be watching their kids from, you know, wherever they are, playing.
Yeah, correct. So the umbrellas that are existing aren't going away. They're going to stay at the pool, those big yellow umbrellas, if you've ever been there. The picnic areas and the large pavilion are going to stay as well. So all of that seating that currently exists is going to remain. And like Michael said, we're still going to have options for lounge chairs, the, just, you know, stackable lawn chairs, things like that.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right, so that is, that is the end of that project. We can jump back to that and have that conversation. Scott Shriner Golf Course is moving right along. We have started to sprig the tee boxes. There was a delay in springing of the greens, which is essentially the new greens and all that goes with it because there were some weeds in the grass down in King Ranch where the grass comes from for the springing. And so, they have to, takes a little while for them to remove all that before it gets shipped up to us, and we want that stuff free and clear of any of that. So it's just the type of grass that you want for the greens. Last projects that we're still working on is the repairs to the deck and a little renovation. So the deck is two-tiered and fairly, it's sort of not, it's not used very well because it's limited space on one deck, and then it drops down to another. And it's a very short stretch, and nobody really uses it. So we're going to flatten that out, so it's all at the same level as the pro shop in the back, and I think a lot more people will avail themselves to that. And so, we're getting pricing on that. And painting still needs to happen for the outside of the pro shop. And so, we're working through the contract for that, and we're slated to be open for the heart of the hills, and hopefully a little bit before, and y'all can go out there and play and/or just drive golf carts out there.
When is it supposed to open?
So, you know, basically, we want to give that grass as much time as we can. So right now, it looks like we're gonna have about 100 days, maybe 110, and so, end of August. And so that projected budget is 3.5, but again, just kind of accounting for deltas because we still have people out there, they're still working, there's still stuff that needs to get uncovered. I don't want to say 3.5, and we're, we're there. The bridges have all been replaced. Stuart's actually trying to find homes for new ones, for the old ones, to sell them to other municipalities if they need them. We had new cart paths on number 10, so that is the, on the bridge is on number three, and the cart path is on number 10. That's Scott Shriner. Okay, AC Shriner House, demo is complete. The elevator steel framing is done, and it's wrapped. So we're significantly further along in that process. And we've been talking back and forth with the board from HHHC and Angela, their executive director, about modifications to the plan set. So we're kind of working in concert with them as much as we can. We're kind of far along in the process to make changes at this point. But this one is projected to come in, we're at budget. We're having to use, we'll probably end up having to use our contingency a little bit. And we had hoped to have a landscaping budget that was robust when it's all said and done. But, you know, each week it gets eroded away a little bit here and a little bit there. So it's gonna be a fantastic structure once it's all said and done. And, you know, Louise Hayes Park was built in a day. So maybe we can do the landscaping as a community out there.
What's the budget for that one again?
That's 5.325 million. And then Granger McDonald Park, it's still in the, we're in a waiting game with Texas Parks and Wildlife. We put in a boating access grant for $750,000, up to $750,000. And we're essentially waiting for them to come back and say, yes, you're moving on to the next phase, or no. And if they say no, the project is funded, we'll, we'll start moving towards construction documents. But we have to wait until Texas Parks and Wildlife says yay or nay. And then some of y'all, several of you were able to come out to the Guadalupe and KSP Playground Ribbon Cuttings, and all we've been hearing are really, really good things from the community about what's been happening out there. And lastly, we're working through Downtown River Trail easement still, and the hope is to have an application to TechStop for the transportation alternatives to help fund the lion's share of that library to G Street on the north side of the river. Lennar is blowing and going on their infrastructure. And Habitat for Humanity is on y'all's, is on y'all's agenda today. It was on EIC's yesterday. James Avery, for those of you that remember, they have asked EIC for some help putting a light in on 27. And so they're just awaiting TechStop's donation agreement in order for us to proceed with that. And with that, I will turn it over to any questions and, and get y'all's take on bringing amendment back.
Any questions?
What was the budget for the playgrounds, the two playgrounds?
$800,000. We have some savings with those. I think we've got 46, I think it was $46,000, and that's gonna, our hope is to use it. We were hoping to use that for something else, but.
Well, and you were talking about some savings on the Shriner Golf Course.
Yes, ma'am.
About how much that is?
Conservatively, I would say $250,000, maybe $350,000 out of that budget.
Don't spend it yet.
Yeah, don't, well, that's why I'm nervous to say a number because like, we're, we're still kind of, we're in that process, right? The, the largest savings are gonna be at the Calhoun Theater. We overestimated on that cost.
If I'm hearing you correctly, you, what you need from us and I is consensus to bring back amendments to, especially the pool project, from savings from other projects. Is that correct?
Well, so, yes, sir. What, the hope is, what we would ask for is an amendment to the pool agreement between EIC and City Council, so it would come before them and then you, to amend that agreement to $7,750,000. And we would need to do a reduction in the others to account for it. And so, EIC was saying they would be willing to hold a, kind of a special meeting the day before your council meeting in May because we also hope to bring the perceived low bidder, qualified low bidder, sorry, to the council on Tuesday for, to enter into a contract. So, EIC said they were okay with holding a special meeting next month to account for this. And really, and I, and I hate saying this usually because a lot of times we can't wait, but this timeline is, we want to, we want to make sure we get going. We spent a lot of time value engineering and trying to accommodate as many things as we could, and we're running up on schedule a little bit there.
Any questions? Go ahead.
So lifting the bulkhead out of the pool, you can do both 25 and 50 meters. How big a number is that?
You can't do, oh, how big is the delta between the?
Lifting it out and just moving it.
I gotta look, I can look and see, but I, I'll have to get back to you on that. We haven't, we haven't even considered it in a long time because it was removed as an option just because of the cost to try and get us to budget.
But you, do you have an idea what the number is? I mean, you can pay.
Well, it's three, we can certainly get it for you, 100%.
I mean, you got a ballpark, I mean, that'd be.
150 on top of, because we have to put in the railings. Now it's a permanent fixture on top of the pool, right? I can dig in while we're doing executive session and have that pretty close.
What was the original budget on the pool, Michael? I'm sorry.
Back when singing win park plan and the pool for 5.3. That was pre-COVID days, days, the salad days. Yeah, days I wish we could go back to.
Other questions? You, you feel like we have consensus for them to bring stuff back to us? Applying savings from flood projects to other projects?
Yep.
It's like you have consensus.
Okay. And we know full well, there's more questions than answers right now from everybody, and we understand that. And we've, we're actively having those conversations with, with everybody at this point, so, thank you.
Thank you for your work on these. All right, let's move on to the executive session item. We'll need a motion to go into executive session for item 3A.
I'll make the motion to go to executive session under- I'll make the motion to go to executive session under section 551.071 and 551.072.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? All the favors are vote, and we'll meet upstairs in executive session.